I'm calling the order. The City Council meeting of Columbus, the date is October 22, 2025, and the time is 6 o'clock. The first thing on the agenda is to stand up and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for the record, Councilman Jenny Latin is online or on Zoom. And we'll go to the first item on the adoption of the agenda. Anybody want to make a motion?
This is Scott. I'll move to adopt the October 22, 2025 City Council Agenda.
It's Rob, second.
We've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. We'll start with Scott.
Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye. The motion passes. We'll go on to item B, consent agenda. Anybody want to make a motion on that? Or any corrections?
This is Scott. I can make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in Agenda Item B.
Rob, second.
We've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Again, we'll start with Scott.
Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye. The motion passes. We'll go on to item C, presentations and items for council action. The first item on the list is the public forum. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up and make a statement to the council? And if you do, just state your name and your address and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Richard Islandfeld. I live at 9021 167th Lane Northeast. So I'm right next to Howard Lake and Kettle River, just across the street.
Can you move the mic right up to you? We're really having a hard time hearing today.
Okay, that work better?
Yeah, that's better, sir. Thank you.
Name is Richard Islandfeld. I live at 9021 167th Lane Northeast. I'm the next street just north of Howard Lake. So anyway, I got, one is that light that got put up there. I'm wondering if there's any way they can put a skirt on the back end of that because as the leaves are leaving the trees, and if that's, if we get snow this year, it's going to put a lot of glare right into my house and my shop next door. Got a lot of light bouncing around already. So I'm just wondering if that's something that can be looked into. The other thing is being there at that intersection, I wonder if there's any way a squad car could be more in that area. Seems to be the last couple of years here, and this year especially, a lot, a lot of noise from people spinning of tires, revving engines, super loud exhaust coming down Howard Lake and then going either north or south on Kettle River. And it's, I've had my house foam injected, windows put in. I can't do anything more to my house to make it more quiet, but that intersection's pretty bad. I've been there in a few accidents, being kiddy cornered from it, running over there and helping that. So I'm just wondering if there's possibility of getting a squad to sit there, just maybe people be a little bit more conscious of what they're doing when they're leaving the And then I'm just wondering, I know I should probably take this up with Anoka County about maybe getting that intersection brushed out, because I noticed people are coming off of Howard Lake and they're creeping out further and further on the Kettle River, trying to see what's coming down the road. And maybe people can find the intersection a little bit better if it's, looks more like an intersection versus all the trees, especially to the south of Howard Lake there on the east side.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I have?
Well, we don't usually in open forums get into discussion.
Oh, yeah.
They usually just, you know, but I, we can, a couple of these issues we can get into, but we don't usually in open forum allow a conversation, do we, Bill?
Mr. Mayor, council, you changed your practice and policies recently to just make it an opportunity for the public to speak to the council. If there's clarifying questions, I think that's fine. If there's discussion and debate, I think that's probably what you're trying to avoid, because then you're doing so without the background that staff might provide another meeting.
Okay. So Mayor, through Mayor to Bill, to Attorney Bill, would we be able to follow up with the individual after the meeting? I mean, because I'd be happy to. I think Scott and I both can sympathize with these same issues being pretty close to being your neighbors.
I mean, every day you can see new black rubber marks almost.
Yeah.
It's just getting nerve wracking. It's not one car a day. I get home and from about 2 to 6 o'clock, it's every couple of minutes, there's somebody just roaring out of there, especially around about 2:30 or so.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if it's possible, maybe Richard could leave his phone number if he's willing to with, okay, and then we can reach out, because I am putting together a list for our council meeting for the Sheriff's Department to have places where the sheriff's deputy sits. That was part of a previous council meeting, and I would certainly like to follow up with Richard on that.
Sure, I think it's good, just like we don't want to get into a.
Yeah, no, no, it's just concerns I seen, I'm just bringing up. That's it. I mean, I notice there's a lot of cars that do miss that intersection, but most of them are going a lot faster than other people, and they usually have a phone stuck to their head.
And sir, other people brought up similar complaints, so we'll follow up.
Yeah, so that's all.
Okay, well, thank you, and I'm sure that Jim heard about the light.
Thanks for handing it up.
Okay, and my phone number's on the list there, and you want me to give it gentleman over?
I'll take it as soon as we're done with the meeting. I'll collect all that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us.
Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to get up and say something? Anybody online that I'd like to confront on the open forum? Hearing none, we're going to close the open forum and go on to item number two under C, Anoka County Sheriff's Office, 2026 Law Enforcement Contract Amendment, pages 19 through 27. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attached is amended proposal for the City of Columbus Law Enforcement Contract with the Anoka County Sheriff's Department. Article four, compensation and term, is requested to be updated to reflect the total cost of the contract at $547,973. When the contract was considered for approval at the October 8, 2025 council meeting, there was an error in the quoted amount of the contract that stated that the net cost sum of $531,089 was the cost that they were proposing, which is the total cost less state aid. While Anoka County Sheriff's Office has consistently received state aid funds over the past 20 years, it is not always guaranteed. Therefore, the total contract cost should have been reported as $547,973. For billing purposes, the county will be invoiced quarterly based on the total cost. The fourth quarter invoice will be adjusted by the state aid received for 2026. Council was verbally quoted and voted on the net cost, which again is the total cost less the anticipated state aid, at the October 8, 2025 meeting, which will likely be the final amount paid. However, the Anoka County Sheriff's Office wants to ensure that we are aware that the contract itself reflects the total cost and not the net cost. Anoka County Sheriff's Office regrets this confusion, but wants to make sure there's no misunderstanding should the final billing be greater than the amount of $531,089 as shown at the bottom line of Attachment A. Based on the Anoka County Sheriff's Office contract presentation at the October 8, 2025 council meeting, Councilmember Wendell made the motion to approve the contract. To correct the ACSO error would require that Councilmember Wendell make a motion for rescission of the original action, and if that is approved, make a second motion to approve the corrected amount. The amount of $547,973 would be included in the proposed 2026 final budget and be offset by savings in other areas to account for this adjustment.
Good to all the council members. I think Jenny, did that answer your questions earlier?
Yep, this is Jenny, yes. I think Jack had one correction, and he made that correction, so that's perfect.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on this or comments?
No, Mayor.
Nope.
You want to make the motion then again?
Sure. I, Scott Wendell, move to approve the amended Anoka County Sheriff's Department contract in the amount of $547,973 as presented in the staff report for Agenda Item C-2.
Rob, second.
We've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion or any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. We'll start with Scott.
Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye. The motion passes. We'll go on to item number three, Saunders Purchase Agreement Extension Request, closing date pages 28 through 31. Jack?
Steve Saunders is requesting an extension of the purchase agreement closing date for parcel 24322211-0006, a city-owned 7.7 acre site in the northeast quad of the 129 interchange on Interstate 35. Mr. Saunders signed the purchase agreement to acquire this property from the city on March 12, 2025. The current closing date was scheduled to be no later than November 7, 2025. Mr. Saunders has encountered delay in meeting this date due to issues with the title search for the sale of a property he owns or provide the funds for the purchase of the city property. Due to issues beyond his control with his bank, Mr. Saunders is requesting an extension of the closing date on or before March 2, 2026, with no additional escrow required. His attorney has recommended, though, that this be, this date be set for March 21, which is the time of the extension of the two grants that he can request to extend this date into March. Staff met with Mr. Saunders on Thursday, September 25, 2025, to discuss the request to extend the closing date without additional escrow funds to be added to an amended agreement. Huntington Bank can close with Mr. Saunders on a 1031 lock exchange between now and February 28. Mr. Saunders had initial insurance that this would happen by November the 7. However, there are issues with records transitions of TCF Bank into Huntington Bank, and not all loans and leases have been finally closed or completely transferred. In addition to the bank issues encountered by Mr. Saunders to close on the original date, there has been precedent for extensions with no additional escrow required for these types of purchase agreements with the city. Extensions were previously granted in 22, 2022, and 2023 to the Harshenko Apollo Group for a purchase of a property on Hornsby Street. Mr. Saunders' request is consistent with the purchase agreement, which provides two options to extend the closing date and additional 60 days or 120 in total. Exercising both options was rescheduled, the last date to close on March 21, 2026. Therefore, his proposal of closing on this date or before is in concurrence with agreement. City Council is requested to consider the extension of the closing date for Steve Saunders' purchase agreement for the city-owned property 243222110006 to March 21, 2026, and exclude additional escrows for the two extensions with the following conditions. The buyer will deposit a legal review escrow in the amount of $1,000 with the city to cover legal costs associated with this amendment, and further rights or options to extend the closing date beyond March 21, 2026 must be agreed upon by both parties.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may add to Mr. Davis's presentation, we receive comments from the buyer's attorney. They are marked in this document, they are technical. We, as your council, agree with them. They essentially tie to the inspection period, the feasibility period, and so the motion, if you agree, would be changed as follows. This is in C3. The motion would read, move to approve the extension of the feasibility period rather than closing agreement date to March 31, 2026. The reason for that is the agreement, the closing date is tied to the feasibility period and occurs after the feasibility period, so the operative language would tie to the feasibility period, and they've asked for March 23 to accomplish all they need to accomplish prior to closing. So that, that is reflected in the marked up document that was handed to you, and with that change, the motion would be in line with the agreement.
So Bill, so on our motion here, we got March 21, but in this one, it's March 23.
Correct.
So we go at the 23rd?
The 23rd is in the agreement that we've negotiated with the buyer.
Anybody on the council have any discussion or questions?
Yes, Rob, I just got a question. So in the meanwhile, that's quite a ways out right now, right? Can we still entertain possible purchases if, say, this falls through like the Harshenko deal did?
No, we cannot. One of the, one of the primary purposes of a purchase agreement is to make sure that excludes all other offers. So they've just had some problems with the 1031 exchange. We knew that from the very beginning that they wanted to do a 1031 exchange of other property to buy this property, and so we're kind of basically cooperating with working through that. I think, as Mr. Davis said, in the Harshenko purchase, we extended, the city extended a number of times without, without cost. Some of these, because of the higher interest rates, some of these apartment deals are also a little more difficult to do than a standard commercial project.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jenny, you have any questions?
Nope, my only question was relating to Jack. In the original document, it noted that the city would incur any legal costs, and Jack clarified that, that Steve and the Saunders group would incur those costs, so that was cleared up, so that should be okay.
Thank you. I remember the 1031 we talked about earlier, so it's been around, it isn't, didn't come out of the woodwork, it's just.
That's correct.
That's been.
It was part of the original proposal.
Anybody want to make a motion or any other discussion?
I have one quick question, Mayor, if I could. Is there any other interest in that property right now, Jack?
No.
Okay.
That was what I was getting at, yeah. Thanks.
Anybody want to make the motion or?
Yes, Rob. So I, Rob Bush, move to approve the extension of the closing agreement date to March 21, 2026, for the purchase of city parcel 24-32-22-11-0006, as presented in the staff report for Agenda Item C3.
May I clarify that it's, the date is March 23, and it's extension of the feasibility period, so those were the two changes.
I accept that amendment.
Thank you.
This is Scott. I can second that.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. We'll start with you, Jenny.
Jenny, aye.
Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. Motion passes. Go on to item number.
Four.
Four, Verizon Small Cell Tower IUP and Tax Amendments, running as this, pages 32 to 53. Jack?
Mr. Mayor, I got this one.
Oh.
The city received a complete application from Verizon Wireless for an interim use permit and tax amendment to allow a small cell installation at 15201 Zurich Street Northeast on September 12, 2025. The small cell is proposed to be installed on an existing light pole in the northern parking lot near the entrance of the casino and hotel. This new small cell will improve coverage and increase network capacity for the facility, leading to better services during large-scale events. A public hearing for the IUP and tax amendment was held before the Planning Commission on October 1, 2025. There was no public comment, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the IUP and tax amendment on October 15, 2025, based on the findings of fact and the subject to the recommendations in the corresponding staff report. The Planning Commission and city staff is requesting that the city council consider approving the text amendment and IUP.
Anybody on the council have any questions or?
This is Scott. Did this come before us in a joint meeting?
It was a joint meeting, yes.
Then I, I think what came out of the Planning Commission, the last Planning Commission, was an addition that maybe the city council may or may not be aware of, of item number 11, where I think, if I'm correct, what was added is that there's going to be a second small antenna, which we may have been aware of, at an unknown location in that parking lot in the future, and I believe that there's language now that they would just be required, rather than come and do a separate IUP on that, that the city staff would be allowed to issue a permit. Is that correct? And that may have been different from what we heard at the joint meeting, so just wanted to point that out for everybody's attention.
Any other discussion on it? Jenny, you have anything?
Nope, I think we reviewed this as a joint meeting, so I think everything was clarified at that point.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
I certainly can. I, Scott Wendell, move to approve Ordinance 25-03 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 7A of the City of Columbus Code Ordinances, Section 1C-7, permitting communication towers and antenna as an interim use in the horse racing district.
It's Rob, I'll second.
We've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion or questions? I have a question. Should we just add this to the other one or just?
No, we need to make two separate motions on this one.
Okay, all right, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. Scott?
Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye. Motion one passes. We'll go on to motion two under this. Somebody want to, I'll make.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, Ron Hanigraff, move to approve the interim use permit to allow a small wireless cellular transmitter installation at 15201 Zurich Street Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota.
Scott, I'll second.
We've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jenny, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We'll go on to item number five. Is this yours, Jack, or Aaron's?
I'll take this one. The Minnesota Association of Small Cities is a statewide organization dedicated to representing cities with populations under 5,000. The Minnesota Association of Small Cities provides advocacy at state and federal levels, ensuring the unique needs of small cities are represented in legislative discussions. In addition to policy advocacy, the association offers networking, education, and resource-sharing opportunities to strengthen small city government operations, governance and operations. Membership connects communities like ours to a broader coalition, working to address common challenges common to small municipal municipalities across Minnesota. Cap O'Rourke, the executive director, made a presentation at the October 7, 2025 City Council Workshop Meeting that outlined the benefits of membership in their group. The cost of membership for the City of Columbus would be a $200 annual base fee and a charge of 50 cents per capita per year. Estimated total cost for 2026 to the city would be $2,400 or approximate. Staff recommends that the city join the Minnesota Association of Small Cities and evaluate their contribution to the outcome of progress in resolving the unique fiscal disparities issue with the City of Columbus and the approval of the Hornsby Street project in 2026 bonding bill to determine if there is a future value in remaining in the membership after next year.
Any discussions?
So question on this, there'd be a lobbyist, if I recall, out of that meeting that's down at the Capitol all the time, kind of speaking on our behalf, correct?
Mr. O'Rourke is a lobbyist as well.
He is, right, yep, okay.
Yeah, so a question I had too was, I know, I believe it was Councilmember Latin asked for a list for each, to be, to be provided to each council member. I would still like that list, because I'd like the individual council members to be able, should they choose to do their due diligence and make phone calls to other members. I would like a little more time to be able to have the opportunity to do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Prior to the, to the meeting, I did receive a link to the member website from Cap himself. However, that doesn't print out very nice, and it wasn't included in your packet. I did forward each council member access to that link, so you can click on the link and see the member cities if you have an interest in reaching out to any one of those. I can tell you that the City of Stacy, just north of us, is a member. That would be probably the closest one in proximity that we wouldn't be able to reach out to, but there certainly, there's a fairly lengthy list.
So Mayor, if I could be recognized, Scott, are you wanting to reach out to them before we approve this?
Yeah, I would like the opportunity to, and I, I don't know if that's why Councilmember Latin made the motion, but, or made the request, but honestly, I was going to make the same request, so we had the opportunity to do that.
If I'd be in favor of that.
Assuming that we have no pressing business where, where we would need this service right away to table it till next meeting, that's a possibility.
I'm good with that.
Actually, you have a comment?
There's, you know, it's something we need to consider by the end of this year at the latest, but we don't have to approve this tonight, so if you wish to table it so you can make some calls to see what values they've contributed to other member cities, then that would be good information to have.
Jenny, do you have any comments on this?
No, I think it would be good to get that list, though, so I appreciate that.
Okay, well, why don't we table it till our November 9 meeting?
Maybe the November the 12 meeting.
12, okay.
Do you want a motion for the tabling?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is Scott. I move to table the discussion on the approval of the cost of the annual membership to the Minnesota Association of Small Cities until the November 12 meeting.
It's Rob, I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion, any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Rob, I'm Scott, oh, Scott. I tried to switch it up. Scott?
Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye. Motion will be put off till November 12. Item number six, is that agenda for November 4, 2025, City Council Workshop Meeting, pages 59?
Our council workshop meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 4, 2025, at 5:30 PM. The following items are recommended for discussion. Discussion of a city council vacancy, discussion of the 2026 final budget, discussion of the wage and compensation study, and discussion of a performance review policy for approval consideration at the council meeting on November the 12. Staff recommends that the city council set the agenda for the items presented and make additions or deletions to this list as appropriate.
Does anybody on the council have anything to add or subtract on this agenda? Hearing nothing. I'd just like to say that item number one, if we pass this, the next few weeks, think about how we're going to replace the council person. There's several items have an election, go through the same process we did earlier about somebody on the commissions or the general public, whatever, those three items. So think about it, and we'll come back and talk that on November 4, that main issue. Other than that, I'll make a motion that we.
Mayor.
But, yeah.
A question, and through you to Bill. So can we set a meeting on discussion of vacancy prior to approving the approval of that vacancy?
Yes.
Just want to make sure from a procedure standpoint.
I think you're fine. You have notice of that.
Okay.
Request for resignation, so.
Great.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Back to the motion. I, Ron Hanigraff, move to approve the agenda for the November 4, 2025 City Council Workshop.
Rob, second.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Rob? I mean, Scott?
Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye.
Jenny, you're not here, so you're screwing everything.
Yeah. We'll go on to.
I do what I can.
While we could put your name over there on the table. Put item number seven, the Lions Building Space Lease, 2025 to 2030, pages 60 through 73.
At the May 6, 2025 City Council Workshop Meeting, council discussed a request from the Lions Club for an extension of their lease. the Lions' Club for an extension of their lease of space in the Public Works Building for meeting room facilities and storage space. The current lease expires October 31, 2025, and is for two separate spaces totaling 1,053 square feet. In November 2024, with the approval of the Lions', their space, their lease space was reduced by approximately 120 feet, square feet in the coal storage area to create an office for the Anoka County deputies. With the decrease in rental space, the city reduced the lease amount from $1,408 a year to $1,253 for the 50th year of the agreement. City council requested us to do an analysis of the cost of this to determine what a fair price would be for the lease agreement. City staff performed this analysis of operational costs and provided this to city council also on May 6, 2025. And with this, the lease cost of the building would be reduced to a rent of $1,200 for the first year of the lease from October, November 1, 2025 to October 31, 2026. And if this amount increased annually at a rate of 2%, the increase annually prior to this was 3% until the lease expires on October 31, 2030. At this time, no other changes to the lease have been requested by the Lions' Club. The proposed rent for 2026 is $53 less than their current payment of $1,253, and with the accelerator cost in this, their rent would be almost the same as it was going forward back for the last five years.
Mr. Mayor and council, I just confirmed with the city administrator that those were the only changes, otherwise it would be subject to legal review. So, with that, we're good to go.
Good. Any other comments or statements, council members?
You need a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, Rob Bush, moved to approve the extension Alliance Club lease contract for space in the city Public Works Building as exhibited in attachment two of the item for an addition of five-year term commencing November 1, 2025 and expiring October 31, 2030.
Scott, I'll second.
We got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Scott?
Aye. Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye. The motion passes. Go on to item D, consultant liaison and staff reports. First one on the list is city engineer report. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Brian Bach, Mayor, consulting city engineer. At the last council meeting, I was directed to get soil borings for Notre Dame on Kettle River Boulevard to West Broadway Avenue. I did get proposals from two boring contractors to do 50 borings along the corridor to identify the typical pavement and soil conditions below the roadway surface. American Engineering Testing did provide the low quote in the amount of $28,160. They also indicated they could start in about three weeks, do the work in about three to four days, and have the report to us four weeks from completion of the field work. The borings, we also included 12 to 15 corings of the pavement in both the north and the southbound lanes. And what we're going to do there is evaluate those corings to see if there is a substantial difference between the southbound lane and the northbound lane. Primarily, what we're going to be looking at is the density, which would be an indication of the level of compaction that was provided to the pavement. We hope that identifies if there is a difference to help us explain why there's different distresses in the southbound lane versus the northbound lane. It is recommended that the council approve the boring proposal from AET in the amount of 28,000. We're also recommending that we include a $5,000 contingency to do either additional depth borings if there's some area where we want to go even deeper under the roadway core. With that, I stand for any questions that council may have.
Mayor, this is Scott, if I may. Brian, how deep are we going initially on the boring?
Four feet.
Four feet?
Yeah. Which is equal to or slightly more than the bottom of the ditch. There are a couple of occasions where the ditch is actually a little bit below four feet, so that's why we're suggesting that we have a contingency if we want to proceed further down.
Okay.
In those areas.
Very good. Thank you.
So, they can tell on the asphalt if it's malfunctioning the asphalt compared to the other?
Just, it'll be a relative comparison between the north and southbound, so we'll be able to see if there is a measurable difference between the two pavements to try to explain why we're seeing distress in southbound versus northbound. It really won't explain why we're getting, you know, the delaminating of the seal code, but it will at least tell us if there is a difference between the north and southbound, physical difference.
So, they do 25 on one side and 25 on the other boring?
No, no, they're going to, there's going to be 50 along the corridor, and yeah, they'll be staggered back and forth, so yes, you're correct, probably 25 on either side.
Okay, just moves back.
Yeah, and then the corings, we're going to do about 15 of those in the pavement, so we're going to be alternating from side to side.
Would be nice to know, but you think we're going to get an answer?
On the soil, certainly. On the pavement, yet to be determined.
Okay. So, that's why they go down to the bottom of the ditch, so to see if they built it up?
Built it up from that elevation.
Yeah.
And then we are recommending a contingency if we want to go a little bit deeper into the locations, just to see if there's any goodness about that.
Sounds good.
There's a couple of areas that are wetter than others, so, you know, in those areas, we thought it might be, might be important to maybe go a little deeper in those areas just to say we've covered our basins here.
Do you need a motion on this to approve it?
Yes.
Do we have one on here?
No, we were waiting to see what the discussion's going to be, but essentially, the motion would be to authorize city staff to approve the award to American in the amount of what Brian stated with an allowance or contingency of $5,000 for deeper borings if necessary in certain areas.
Mayor?
Jenny, did you have any questions?
No, I just wanted to thank Brian and JW for their prompt work on this. I know it was only brought up last month, so it's just really impressive that you're able to work on this so quickly, so thank you for that.
And, Rob?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, through the mayor to Brian, with these, with these tar samples, that's really just going to tell us if there was difference in tar. Does it really matter since we're going to take it all the way down and shape it and pave it? Is it more important to just get the soil borings and save the added cost on the batuminus that's going to be removed and taken away anyway?
The soil borings are certainly more important than the condition.
Yeah.
You're correct, we're probably going to remove it, but it helps explain why there might be a difference. I looked at the AET proposal and they didn't break out the coring cost, so I can't identify specifically borings versus corings, what the cost difference was between the two. I can say that this proposal was substantially less than the other proposal, so we, we feel, you know, we're comfortable spending that little extra money for the borings, just to kind of answer that question, or at least try to, and then the allowance if we need to go deeper.
Okay.
What was the cost in the contingency again?
Five.
Five. Last one on the line there.
Is it on there?
No other discussion on it? So, we have to make a motion that recommend that we pay the amount of $28,160, reference these borings on Notre Dame, to include a 5,000 contingency in the budget for deeper borings.
To American Engineering, right?
Yeah. Well, yeah.
I think your motion is kind of written in the last line of the city engineer's memo. If you just want to reference that or use that in the crafting of your motion, it's all there.
I'll read it then. It is recommended the city approve the soil borings proposal from AET in the amount of $28,160. In the event it appears, appears that the poor soils continue below the four-foot boring depth, it is recommended the city include a 5,000 contingency in the budget for deeper borings. Any second on that?
This is Scott, I'll second.
We got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Rob?
Rob, aye.
Scott, aye.
You said Rob, right. You're wrong.
Jenny, aye.
Go with it.
Ron, aye. Vote, the motion passes. Jenny, get back home. We're going on, the next item, any other things to report there? Brian?
Nothing else, sir.
Thank you. We'll go to city attorney's report.
Mr. Mayor and council, the, the folks over at St. Clair Lakes, working through their HOA, have been, they've reached out to the DNR about certain improvements, docking improvements, trail improvements to lead to the dock. All of that was essentially allowed within the settlement agreement. They have drafted their own agreement that would be the template for the city's agreement, what Megan Rogers has asked for, given that this was part of a negotiated settlement agreement, that we make sure by reaching out directly to the DNR that that agreement will be effective and accepted. So, with that, we're going to bring it back. Jack, or was, was the intent to approve it tonight in the form of, and?
The intent was to make sure that all our bases has been touched, so if they haven't, we'll have to bring it back, but hopefully to get some kind of an agreement in place to verify all the changes in the original settlement agreement, so they could proceed with their project.
And, and the reason for this is they've, you know, they've taken good initiative, they've reached out to the DNR, but because we're, as the city, a party to the settlement agreement, we want to independently make sure that the DNR is on board and that they don't have significant new conditions or concerns. So, I don't think, I don't think this will be problematic because it was actually originally conceived in the settlement agreement. We just want to make sure that the follow-on agreement is consistent.
I guess, I had questions too when they were here around the, you know, and they seemed to think that it wouldn't be the case that once that goes in and that easement's there, that becomes public use for anyone that wants to use it. Will we get some kind of feedback on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council member, that, that's the type of thing we want to make sure that we understand because it is city conservation property. One of the requirements of the settlement is that it be held in public ownership. I think there's some interest by the HOA that it be privately owned, but that's the kind, those are the kind of details we want to make sure we understand, whether the public can generally access the dock or only the HOA, whether there's an opportunity for it to be in private ownership. I think your Public Works Director would tell you that he's had some work out there removing trees because it's city property. So, all of those are, those are the details we want to work through and not just kind of take the word of the, the owners. Although I'm sure they have good understanding about their discussions with the DNR, we haven't been privy to those. So, that's the reason for the, the additional step.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's an interesting dynamics in this group, because it's our property and they want to, would they, if they build the dock, it's their dock then?
The, the understanding would be that it would be an easement to allow the dock to be built. It's my view, and it's been my view since the settlement, that would create public access to the waters. And so, you know, that's why I want to make sure that the DNR is on the same page as we're on the same page as the HOA, because we don't want them putting up, you know, trespassing signs, for instance.
And, you know, the other issue too is that although it may be public access, it's private property to get to that, so that's another issue that has to be clearly spelled out and resolved.
That's right.
Jack, I'm glad to hear that second part because, you know, council member, I, I think you were alluding to that too, is I think the big discussion was the private road and the public access to public property being limited. So, I, thank you, Jack. I think that needs to be part of the understanding.
And I asked that question because I'm currently dealing with something with Jack and Ben, Bill, and several others about a road that at one point was owned by two residents that now a DNR has an easement through one side of that road, that in fact, that easement goes right through private property that that owner never knew about, and it's just, it's really forcing me to look into what these things look like and how we do these in, in the city, because the way that operation went, I don't agree with, and the way this thing looks, I, I just, it would have to be public use as well, not just select residents.
And they are somewhat similar. There are a few distinctions and differences, but it's something, that, that's the important point. There really needs to be clarified in this, also along with who's responsible for the upkeep of the facility once it's put in.
Thank you.
And I was involved in that settlement, and my understanding at the time of the settlement that the DNR's position was that any dock would be public, that it's not a private facility.
That's kind of what I'd remembered, yep, because I brought up concerns about what if someone's dock hunting or fishing out there, what does that look like, right? So.
Yeah, who has the?
Say so.
Yeah. Right. If a guy puts up a, a blind on top of that dock, whose is it? Well.
Yeah.
Two details that we wanted to give you, an update since it was a moving matter.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
You have any questions, Jenny?
No, I think everything was pretty clarified there. Thank you.
All right. Is that all we have? Bill?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll go to the city council mayor's report. Do you have anything, Rob?
The only thing I got, attended the pancake breakfast on Sunday, it's a lighter turnout, right? And I saw you were pretty busy, you had folks in with you most of the time, so I didn't, didn't bother, but yeah, food was good and there's a lot more events to come.
We get a few people that come in, but most of them just want to, they don't have big issues, they just.
They just want to meet.
Yeah.
Yep, so that's all I have.
Should you sit in here, Mr. Mayor?
Right, right. And I, I was alone that day, but like I said, it's always up if anybody wants to sit in there with me or one other council members, so we don't have to have the meeting deal, three of us in there, whatever. So, it, it works out a little. You hear some, you know, complaint, not complaints, but it's, it's, you can hear some issues, but they're not big and important. Scott, you have anything?
Real quickly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Tomorrow is the Forest Lake Cable Commission meeting. On the agenda will be some talk about franchising. I want to mention that former council member Hagland was available to me to provide her insight on some of that and publicly thank her for sharing her knowledge and insight and be willing to do that, and it'll be very useful in the meeting tomorrow.
You have anything else?
That's it.
Mayor, I have one more thing, if I could, on my report.
Sure.
So, I had spoke with the sheriff's department last week, it was last Friday, was standing outside my garage after I got off work and a black Dodge Dart came down the road. I am not kidding, about 90 miles an hour, applied the E brake at the end of the road, slid around the cul-de-sac, came back, almost ran my neighbor over as he was getting his mail. So, I guess keep your eyes out for that vehicle, but living not far from where the person under public open forum spoke, I, I have concerns around that too, and I have seen the officers around, it just happens to be at the wrong time. But there's definitely some, some of that going on, so I'm working with the sheriff on that.
Vehicle?
It's a black Dodge, black, black Dodge Dart with dealer plates on it. I can get you a license plate outside of the meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, and if I may, Rob, there's been two more accidents on Howard Lake Drive with car hit deers.
Yeah.
At the sheriff's department, just last week, so, yeah, there is more activity out there. And, and also, they are sitting down at the end of Garrick now, and.
Yeah, I've been seeing them. It's just off times, right?
Exactly.
That's the way police work is.
Oh, yeah.
Right place, right time.
But they're very responsive, so.
Wrong place most of the time.
Yeah, wrong place most of the time. Jenny, do you have anything to say?
No, this is Jenny. I had a Coon Creek Water Tribe meeting on the 13th, nothing to report city-wise out of that. And then tomorrow, we have our wrap-up Fall Fest meeting, and we'll have some feedback from there, but that is all I have.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report as far as meetings, other than I sat in, I heard a, a unique one, and I should just point this out since we're talking about law enforcement. Somebody did come in and talk on Sunday to me, and I'd just like to thank the public for being aware of stuff like this. I'm not going to recite names, I'm not even going to tell you the location, but this party was a resident of Columbus, and one day he seen a vehicle stop, and a woman got out of the car and walked through a woods across the street, and he thought it was odd. the street and he thought it was odd. So he did, made some phone calls and stuff like that. And the deputy came out and the lady was in the woods, tried to take her life. So she was saved and they called the ambulance and all that. But I think that's something that we have to be aware of is if you see anything that looks odd, it's odd. I mean, that was a strange thing, but it turned out to be a happy ending. But that's why I think when we're out there and watching, like neighborhood watch, just like you've seen the cars, you see them up and down the road. It was a happy ending to it, but it was sad to think about that somebody, if he wouldn't have called, that car would have sat there and eventually should accomplish what she was trying to do that day. But it turned out good. So let's go on to the, what's the next one?
EDA.
Report.
Mr. Mayor, the EDA held a special meeting on October 14th, 2025, and discussed the results of a Columbus survey, as well as discussed and authorized candidate interviews to fill the EDA vacancy. I can tell you that interviews were conducted today by two members of the EDA and myself, and a recommendation in the near future will be forwarded to the full EDA for consideration.
And I know me and Jenny were at the meeting. Jenny, do you recall anything else other than what Aaron said?
No, I think we, we had a little bit of discussion around Columbus. We, we also discussed just some potential, maybe workings with the Forest Lake Chamber of Commerce and how that could potentially pivot a little bit. But for the most part, it was pretty focused on finding a new fifth member of our, of our commission. So beyond that, that is all I have.
Thank you, Jenny.
Say, Mr. Mayor, I just have one question. I was online on that meeting and it was brought up that there could be no more than two council members at opening of businesses due to the open meeting law. Is that correct? Or?
No.
So.
You, you can post it to those are called ceremonial events. All we ask is that you let us know when you're going to be there. We'll post it and the posting will say there may be more than two council members present, but they will not be allowed to conduct any official business.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
We're on to item number five, the Personnel Committee report.
Lori Spangler, our deputy city clerk, submitted her notice of retirement to us in early September. Mrs. Spangler's been employed the city for 16 years and made valuable contributions to Columbus residents, city staff, and the city council. City council gave staff direction to advertise for this position. That was done and 26 applications were received. Susan Bosch, the current Lindwood Township Zoning Administrator, was one of the four finalists for the position of deputy city clerk and was interviewed on October 7th, 2025 by the City of Columbus Personnel Committee. Mrs. Bosch was invited to a second interview on October 20th, 2025. The interview panel of this interview consisted of Mayor Hanigraff, myself, and Aaron Berg, Assistant City Administrator. Her resume, application, preliminary background check, and references were thoroughly reviewed by the panel, and she was found to meet qualifications for the position. Her interview demonstrated her communication skills and she was very effective in her explanation of the links between her skill sets and her previous employment as a title closer and the job description duties of the deputy city clerk. Mrs. Bosch's municipal experience has exposed her to a variety of many tasks required of a deputy city clerk, including recycling programs, event planning, elections, permitting, license insurance, document management, and filing and keeping records and postings of city activities. In addition, Mrs. Bosch has shown that she has the people's skills that are as important as the administrative and clerical experience essential to this position. It is the recommendation of the interview panel that Susan Bosch be hired as the deputy city clerk at a starting wage of $31.91 per hour, which is step three of our current 2026 city pay plan. And this includes a benefit package provided to all city employees and a beginning to leave bank of 40 hours vacation and 40 hours sick leave. Mrs. Bosch would then be eligible for a step increase at the end of her first year of employment, subject to a satisfactory annual performance review. So we are recommending that city council consider Mrs. Bosch's hire and if she, if this is granted, she could begin her employment on November the 17th.
Rob?
Question. So she currently serves on a commission?
Correct.
Just verifying. She'll be resigning before taking the position?
She would have to resign that position before she resumes her employment.
Just no residents are going to ask being in this position. I was having a spouse worked here, so I just want that clear. So.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, I said I was in this position when my wife worked here.
Oh, okay.
Someone in, in, in the city already, right? You can't really be on a, it's, it's similar, but not the same. But you can't really serve on a commission in where you work. So.
Correct.
Wanted that out there for the public.
I think we should all understand too that this is a full-time position and that Lori was what, 32 hours?
Correct.
So this is 40 hours versus 32.
Any other discussion here? Jenny, do you have anything?
Uh, no, but I just wanted to thank Susan for everything she's done with the Planning Commission. She has brought a lot of value to the commission. So it's exciting to see her in this new potential opportunity.
Very much. Okay. You have anything, Scott?
No, I think she's been on the Planning Commission for a relatively short time, but been doing a, a pretty good job on the Planning Commission. So I'm excited she's accepted the full-time position.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion. I, Ron Hanigraff, move to approve the hire of Susan Bosch for the position of the deputy city clerk with a starting wage at step three of the 2026 pay plan. $31.91 an hour and pending satisfactory completion of annual employee review and increase to step four, $33.09 in November of 2026.
Scott, I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Scott?
Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jenny, aye.
Ron, aye. The motion passes. Well, now, item number six, the Planning Commission report.
That's me this month. Three items to, that came up during the Planning Commission. The first one was the small cell antenna installation that we voted on today, so I won't beat that one up too much. Second one, there was a discussion about the new fence ordinance. Several things came out of that that may be interesting to the city council and to get on the record. A draining issue, fences need to be raised four feet off the ground, which would be different than what we heard, or something in addition to what we heard in the joint meeting. Schools, parks, and other government would be allowed to have higher fences. Stonewalls have tighter restrictions and can't exceed four feet. Material like corrugated metal sheet, plastic plywood pallets, or other makeshift fencing would be prohibited. And there would be no, oh, potential to submit a survey with setbacks in order to get a permit. Chain link fences were being, were discussed as being approved fences. And then there was a discussion over whether a two-foot setback from the adjoining property line would be mandatory. The discussion was that they were not in favor of that, that that would be encouraged but optional on the setback. They did make a motion for a public hearing that passed. So in their next meeting, though, there'll be a public hearing on the fences. And that's really all I have for the Planning Commission.
Well, thank you. Scott, we'll go to item number seven, Public Works Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Jim Winningside, Public Works Director. I kind of want to touch a little bit on, oh, I'm sorry. Kind of want to touch a little bit on the public open forum. We talked a bit about Sheriff's Department tonight. And one of the things that I just want to get out there, if anybody's listening, the fastest way to get the response from the Sheriff's Department is for these residents to call the Sheriff's Department. You know, we, we get a lot of calls here. I do personally. I would assume city staff does as well. And I, clearly you guys do, to, for help from the Sheriff's Department. But we get a lot better response from the Sheriff's Department when the residents call and it's not us calling. And they seem to be more receptive to that. That's one of the things I, if they call and ask me questions, and I, I will always call the Sheriff's Department and help them out. But I always tell them, make sure that if somebody's speeding down your road, call the Sheriff's Department because Public Works is not going to be able to help you. I can call the Sheriff's Department, but now you've wasted that time when they could be out there trying to help you and calling me, and I, I really can't. So I just want to throw that out there, that I think as much as we want to help people, we do need to pass that along, that, you know, the Sheriff's Department does work for them as well, and they should follow, follow that avenue if they haven't already. The other thing is we talked about trying to clear the right-of-way on Howard Lake on that corner. There, if you go to the north side of the intersection, there's more right-of-way than there is on the south side. So they've cleared to the edge of the right-of-way already. Not saying that they couldn't do a little bit more, but there's 100, call it 110 feet, my rough measurements here, on the north side of the intersection. If you go to the south side, it's something considerably less than that. It's only 80, call it 80 some feet. So, you know, it's 20, 20-plus feet less. So that's why it looks like they haven't cleared that. It's just because there's less public right-of-way there. And then the third thing that I got is resident asked about the lighting. Would you like me to call Canexus and see if we can do something with that? Or do we want to talk about that more? Or what do we want to do there?
I think it's good to call them, but can they shroud it?
Potentially stinking shroud.
Yeah. The light's coming from, not across the street.
No, it'd be the backside.
Yeah, the backside of it. And I mean, we don't need the light back there. We need it in the front.
No, I mean, I think, I think we can do some shrouding on there and just trying to keep the light in the road area. But I just want to make sure that you guys are on board with that before I, I follow through on that.
Yeah. And I think we, we actually discussed that when we talked about the lighting and, you know, potential complaints from the neighbors about that. And so, yeah, 100%.
Okay. All right. I will, I will get ahold of Canexus and have them work on that. And I think that's all I got.
Well, I got something for you.
All right. The glasses came off, so.
Being an old police officer and that, I just want to, I look at tennis court up there and they got the rolled up cyclone fence, and I wonder if it'll be there all winter. I just see somebody grabbing that and hauling it down the road. I don't know why. Is that our liability or is it the contractors?
I, I'm not sure because I haven't been in contact. So this has kind of been a group project with Jack and I. So he's taking care of some stuff. I'm taking care of some stuff. And we haven't really got together. I don't know if they're going to start putting, if they're going to put that fence back up or if they're leaving it down until it gets painted in the spring. My concern is not that somebody's going to take the fence because if they're man enough to grab that thing and carry it out to the road, good for them. I'm more worried about somebody driving cars on the, on the new pavement. That's my, that's my worry. So.
You know, maybe that's a good question. Maybe we should put up that chain and block that parking lot. Well, we, well, we got the guy that comes in to clean the septic, I mean, the satellites up there.
Right. But that, that will, that will go away relatively soon. But we, we already talked about fencing again, or chaining up that, the driveway already today, so.
I just look at it and I don't, I, I, well, they could have piled it up a little better. It's just kind of laying all over the place. And I, you know, we used to think about that all the time. How did they ever think of stealing that? But they can think.
Oh, absolutely. There's, if there's, well, there's a way.
Yeah, when there's a way. And I just look at it and I think, well, we might, if we miss some, who's liable for it? I mean.
Well, between Jack and I, we will contact the contractor and see what the plan is for the fencing and maybe we can secure it. Or maybe, maybe it's their intention to put it back up this fall yet. I don't, I don't know that.
That'd be a good idea, though, like you said.
We will reach out to the project manager, inform him of the concerns and say they need to secure the fence and tidy up some of their work area. And I'm sure that's probably their responsibility, so we will follow up on that.
Well, thank you. It's less expensive if we have to buy another one or whatever. What else is, is that it?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Number eight.
City Administrator's report.
Thank you, Ron. On Thursday evening, October 16th, Councilmember Janet Haglen submitted her resignation from the city council to myself and the mayor in an email. This information was forwarded to city council the following day. As a result of this, she requested that her resignation be submitted for acceptance to city council at tonight's meeting. So I would recommend that a motion be made to approve Resolution 2515 in your packet, acceptance of the resignation of Councilmember Janet Haglen.
Before we start on this, I would, can I make a few comments about Janet? I think Janet has done a great job for the city. All of her achievements that she's done for the city in the last seven years, I don't think they could ever be duplicated. And I'm just going to name off a few. In 2018, when she came on, she took on an issue with Anoka County regarding a senior center, and it was changed over to the community center. But at that time, we were paying some money to the county, referenced that. She looked at the contract and turned it around and saved the city a lot of money. And I can't tell you the amount or whatever. But I, I just remember it. It was a large sum. And I also like to say that 2023, she started the Fall Festival up again after we had the COVID period going on. She also was probably the smartest person around on physical disparities. I mean, she read it, studied it, and explained it to a lot of legislatures down at the Capitol. And also, she was very pointed on achieving a goal of getting everybody on, online with fiber optics with MinCo. And I think right now, if I'm right, Jack, by the end, or maybe it was Cheryl saying by the end of December, we'll have everybody on the city able to get it. Am I correct?
There will be a few pockets that will not be served, but they will be served by other grants from MinCo. So essentially, at that time, everybody will have access to broadband service or is on schedule to be completed by very early spring.
And I know I'm leaving out a lot of what she's accomplished, but she also was on the Sunrise Watershed District in Rice Creek. And we've always had issues with Rice Creek. And she's been right in there battling for the city. So this is just a touch of what she's done. So I'll make the motion. I, Ron Hanigraff, move to approve Resolution 25-15, acceptance of the resignation of Councilmember Janet Haglen.
It's Rob, second.
We have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I just want to say I agree with you and thank you for sharing everything on Councilmember Haglen, even though sometimes we didn't always agree on the way to get things done. She always was open to sharing her knowledge. She did a lot of work to get herself educated on, on things that mattered to the city. And, and I want to publicly again say I appreciate her willingness to share that with us. And she'll be missed for sure.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take.
This is, oh, this is, this is, yeah, this is Jenny. I, I also wanted to thank her. I think we all feel that same sentiment, and she's pretty irreplaceable as a person on the council. So thank you to her for everything she's done.
Okay, then we'll take, no other discussion. We'll take a vote. Scott?
Scott, aye. Rob, aye.
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye. We'll go to motion number two.
Thank you, Mr.
I, Ron Hanigraff, move to approve Resolution 25-16A, a resolution declaring a vacancy on the city council.
Scott, I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Scott?
Aye, Scott, aye. Rob, aye.
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye. Resolution, the next one, the third, is, oh, yeah, this is a different one. Since Janet was a signer on the checks, we have to put somebody else in there. So I, I looked at it and I'm sitting there. I haven't even asked you yet, the council. I, I looked at it, and I'm sitting there, I haven't even asked you yet, the council member, but I'm looking at the one who's got the longest period sitting here, maybe. I'm going to ask Rob if he wants to be the next signer on the checks.
Yes, I accept, Ron.
Okay, so I, Ron Hanigraff, move to approve Councilman Rob Bush as the third city check signer.
This is, this is Jenny, I second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Any questions? We'll take a vote. Scott?
Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
Do I vote on it?
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye.
And Rob, what we'll need you to do before you leave tonight, Cheryl's got the item you need to sign.
Okay.
So she'll sign that, and we'll process that to continue the electronic signature of checks. She can get that done tomorrow.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Other than that, you can have mail over checks that you approve for the year.
Okay, that's all.
Sign it.
Hang around.
Okay, I, just if, I don't know if we clarified it or not, but, and when we talk about the options we have to replace Janet, we'll discuss that on November 4th at our workshop meeting. And can we make a motion there at that time?
No, we'll have to call, we can call a special meeting in addition to the workshop meeting if we want to take action.
Okay, so, so all the council members here think of, remember the three ways that we can do it. We did it the last time. Anybody who was on a commission can put forth, or we can have an election, or we can open it up to the general public. So with that, any other questions here, discussion? I'll make some announcements and just remind you, local government officials meeting October 29th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m., Bunker Hills Activity Center, Sunrise River, White, boy, I'm having a hard time on this one. Water management meeting on October 30th at 6:30 p.m., East Bethel City Hall. City Council Work Meeting, November 4th, 2025 at 5:30 p.m. Planning Commission Meeting, November 5th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. And City Council Regular Meeting, November 12th, 2025. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Somebody want to make a motion for adjournment?
Scott, I move to adjourn.
Rob, second.
We got a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Scott.
Jenny first.
Jenny, aye.
Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. Have a good night.
Way to throw a wrench in there.